All right. I want to first call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. I would first like to thank Susan Miyamoto for providing our prelude music this evening. Susan, welcome back. It's so nice to have you back in the chambers with us, but also wonderful way to start the meeting, so. Thank you. All right, let's see, this evening, our invocation is being provided by Sylvester Scott. Good evening, sir. And then I will be providing the flag salute, if you wouldn't mind all standing, please.
You first.
You first. Sorry.
I pledge allegiance.
Oh, yeah, yeah, invocation first, please, sir.
Okay. O thou forgiving God, these servants are turning to thy kingdom and seeking thy grace and bounty. O God, make their hearts good and pure, in order that they may become worthy of thy love. Purify and sanctify the spirits, that the light of the Son of Reality may shine upon them. Purify and sanctify the eyes, that they may perceive thy light. Purify and sanctify the ears, in order that they may hear the call of thy kingdom. O Lord, verily we are weak, but thou art mighty; verily we are poor, but thou art rich. We are seekers, and thou art the one sought. O Lord, have compassion upon us and forgive us, bestow upon us such capacity and receptiveness, that we may be worthy of thy favors and become attracted to thy kingdom, that we may drink deep of the water of life, may be enkindled by the fire of thy love, and be resuscitated through the breaths of the Holy Spirit in this radiant century. O God, my God, cast upon this gathering the glances of thy loving kindness. Keep safe each and all in thy custody and under thy protection. Send down upon these souls thy heavenly blessings. Immerse them in the ocean of thy mercy and quicken them through the breaths of the Holy Spirit. O Lord, bestow thy gracious aid and confirmation upon this just government. This country lieth beneath the sheltering shadow of thy protection, and this people is in thy service. O Lord, confer upon them thy heavenly bounty, and render the outpourings of thy grace and favor copious and abundant. Suffer this esteemed nation to be held in honor, and enable it to be admitted into thy kingdom. Thou art the powerful, the omnipotent, the merciful, and thou art the generous, the beneficent, the Lord of grace abounding.
Thank you. All right, please join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam City Clerk, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Alexander?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards?
I'm over here.
Mayor Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
All right, well, welcome to the first meeting of 2022, everyone. This year, we have a couple of things we're going to do to kick it off. First, I have a few presentations to make. First one is to an outgoing mayor. It is a presentation of the gavel in appreciation for your dedicated service as mayor to the citizens of the city of Temecula. And just to make note here, it was 2009, 2014, 2017, and 2021 that you have served our beloved community. Thank you, Mary Ann Edwards.
Thank you. I'm the only council member that can use the microphone as it is, standing up, so. In honor of your coming, you know, incoming, being incoming mayor, I thought that it would be more fitting for you to have a gavel that better befits your stature and your intelligence and your, yeah. And so this is the big hammer, I'm not calling it the gavel, the big hammer, and it's not quite finished yet because it's going to be, you know, embellished with gold and diamonds and rubies and all kinds of things. And Tom told me to tell you he will never eat oatmeal again. He's had eaten so much oatmeal for me to make this hammer, so on behalf of the entire city council, and just don't quite use it yet.
I won't, I won't. I'll be careful. Thank you so much. And, oh, don't forget this. Okay, and then presented to Zach Schwenk in appreciation for your dedicated service as CSD president to the citizens of the city of Temecula 2020 and 2021. Thank you, sir. All right, and rounding out this year, we have presentation regarding years of service for several very dedicated and very important people in our community here. So we give pins out for five, 10, 15, 25 years' worth of service. And this year, our recipients are Councilmember Stewart, five years of service to our community, Commissioners Bradley Sullivan, five years of service to our community as well, Robert Carter, 10 years, and the very esteemed Bob Hagel, 15 years. I've asked Mayor Protem Schwenk to provide the pins to our folks, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you so much for all of your service, and if you could join him up at the podium and maybe take a picture or two.
There you go, Stu, five years. And Bob and Brian?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate everything that you do for our community.
Thank you all for your service to this community. It's very important, I think, to recognize that, but also to see that we've got folks that have spent 15 years serving this wonderful city. Cannot thank you all enough for everything you've done. All right, we have one proclamation today. This year's proclamation today is presentation for National Mentoring Month to Big Brothers and Big Sisters of the Inland Empire. So I'm just going to go ahead and read this real quickly. City of Temecula proclamation, whereas the future of Temecula, our state and nation, rests on the shoulders of our youth, and whereas educated, confident, and nurtured children will give rise to stronger cities, counties, states, and nation, and whereas mentoring matches a child with a caring, responsible adult to build confidence, stability, and provide guidance and direction, and whereas mentors are an important part of the Big Brothers and Big Sisters of the Inland Empire mentoring program, where research has shown that children engaged in one-on-one case-managed mentoring programs are more likely to have an increase in school attendance, improve high school graduation rates, and prepare young people for college and career readiness, all the while ensuring that these young people find alternatives to involvement with substance abuse, violent behaviors, and the criminal justice system. And whereas January has been designated as the National Mentoring Month, calling on adults across America to become involved with mentoring, I now therefore, Matt Ron, on behalf of the city council of the city of Temecula, hereby proclaim this month of January 2022 to be Mentoring Month, and I urge all citizens in our community to join me in this special assistance. So I'm not sure, do we have a representative here this evening, Mr. Schwenk, if you wouldn't mind? Thank you for joining us here this evening, and if you wouldn't mind saying a few words, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
My name is Sean Sorensen, and I am the board chair here in the Temecula Valley. And I have to say, I'm so grateful that you're doing this, and I think every one of you, and probably every one of you sitting here, has had a mentor, but we have so many children in our Temecula Valley that don't. So we are looking for people who will stand up for these kids, and I'm so blessed because my husband and son are both Big Brothers, and I've got to watch behind the scenes these young men just grow and change because they have that one person who believes in them. And so we've got such great people here, just everybody, if you're interested, please look up Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the Inland Empire. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right, moving on to board and commission reports. Let's start this evening with Gary Watts with our planning commission. Evening, Gary.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff, audience. I think we have, yeah, we have a planning, we had a planning commission on January, whatever, two weeks ago. And I was selected again to be the chair because last year I filled in when John Tellese left early, and Linay Terle Trejo was elected the vice chair for this coming year, so we're excited about that. Got a good team going, and with the new additions, we're real, real happy about that. Next slide, please. We approved the development plan and parcel map. Basically, it's down behind Best Buy on the east part of town off of Butterfield Stage there would be one of them. And there's a little sliver of land right next to the creek, and that's going to be the site of a future gas station and a little store as well. It's a very, it's a very small piece of land, but they've got their plans made, and it looks like it's going to be a success, so. Next slide, please. That might be it. I think it is. Any questions?
Great, thank you so much. All right, and do we have Denise Wilson here? Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor.
Okay, I just got my workout for today. Okay. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and Commissioners that are present. The ready commission held our meeting on January the 13th, 2022. The highlights of the meetings are as follow. We appointed a new Commissioner, Mr. Adam Eventhal. He was sworn in, and then we have our departing Commissioner, Emilde Herrera. We provided her with her farewell comments. The Commissioners Denise Wilson and Jackie Stee were unanimously selected as chair and vice chair for the 2022 year. The commission revealed an overview of the city's existing youth and government program, and we related demographic information and provided general recommendations to enhance the program through additional inclusionary methods. There was a general consensus that the youth in government program should be expanded to include additional students at other grade levels, non-public schools should be included, and a capacity building could occur through a variety of methods, including but not limited to the use of rotating staff, Commissioners' involvement, and council, and off-site or virtual programming. The commission also confirmed consensus around the following items for the multicultural day that we're so excited about. Number one, the single-day event would be sort of a festive-held annual on the weekend closest to May 21st, which coincides with the World Cultural Diversity Day. Number two, all segments of the community should be made aware of this event, and all should be encouraged to attend or actively participate. Individuals, children, family, different organizations, different clubs, everyone is invited. So based on our current demographic data of the community, activities could include food, drink, entertainment, and education tied to cuisine. And basically, we just don't want people to make their favorite dish, but we want them to tell us the history behind it, why people from the South love hot water cornbread, you know, what is the history? Why is that so prevalent in the community? So we want to make this a learning experience. Number four, there could be an economic tourism and resource tied in with these events for our local businesses, service providers, and nonprofit. Emphasis was placed on a learning environment. We want to make sure we learn the culture, not just see it in action and experience it, but we want to know the history behind it. Commissioners attended the first day of service to commemorate the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. yesterday on January the 7th, and I was glad to see some of the Commissioners and some of the city council members there and the mayor also. And our next commission meeting will be February the 10th at 6:30, and all are invited to attend. Thank you, and that completes my report. Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Eric Levine, please give us your community services update.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Let me be among the last to wish you all Happy New Year. We have a brief report tonight. Next slide, please. So last week, our commission met, although it was a slightly briefer group because we had a couple of us who were out. Vice Chair Sizemore led the group, and we were able to welcome new Commissioner Euan Hawkes. So she was sworn in last week. And also at the meeting, we postponed the appointment of our chair and vice chair because we usually like to have our new Commissioners there for a month, give them an opportunity to have an opinion about how they want to make their election choices. And then the last item for tonight is the Sports Ranch at Summers Bend will be grand opening on February 12th at 10:00 a.m. All are welcome, all of you, and all of you. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, I believe we have a public safety report this evening from our esteemed Captain Zach Hall. I'll forgive you for your response time.
Good evening. I know, I should have been standing there in queue, I apologize. I was making a note. I don't have too much to present to you this evening, but I did want to go over the calls for service, as you can see, they're slowly creeping up. Year-to-date here is 83,000 compared to 81,000, and in 2021, for the month of December, we had 6,500, but in 2020, we had 6,800. Changing up the way I present reports to you, I wanted to just kind of give you an overview of some of the things that have happened recently within the city of Temecula and some of the technology and cases we've made. I wanted to bring to your attention a couple of recent Flock cases. I know you received summaries of them in your email, but of note was the interesting one with the robbery crew out of Los Angeles that ended up sneaking into the city. Flock picked them up, and what they, this robbery crew did, they would target senior citizens in Costco parking lots. Flock picked the car up on the way into the city. Deputies were able to intercept the car between here and Costco. They provided a significant amount of time of surveillance on the vehicle to ensure they had the right people and it was the right car, reached out to allied agencies, confirmed that that's in fact who they were looking for, and then they moved in and made the arrest. Several robberies at Costcos all over Southern California are linked to these predators, and we were able to pick them off here in Temecula based on Flock. The local AAMPM robbery we had, also a Flock success, robbed the AAMPM, got into a vehicle, fled the area, Flock picked it up, and then we were able to subsequently make the arrest using the Flock system. Many stolen cars and a couple of missing people, just in the last 30 days. So definitely successful uses of Flock as we continue to get deputies trained up, brought online, and people use the systems more and more. Very interesting is how many cases we're able to go back and look at historically now, and then try to tie somebody to the vehicle and watch where that vehicle was at, and follow-up on those cases and hopefully close those. So so far, a really good tool, and I look forward to what it'll bring for us in the future. Unfortunately, you heard, we had the homicide in Old Town, where one person was shot and killed, three others were shot and wounded. A horrible incident. However, I would like to point out that the investigative excellence of the sheriff's homicide detail, in less than 15 hours, had the case solved, both the primary suspect and his accomplice in custody. While there's not too many details I can provide, I don't know much more than I've already discussed with most of you, but I did want to point out that that is remarkable, that within a short amount of time, they would have the suspect, primary suspect, and his accomplice in custody, and both are in jail. I also did want to point out that we saw the Temecula City messaging on the TVH hospital and the need for meals to help our fellow frontline staff over there. And over the weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, deputies secured donations and delivered evening meals on each one of the nights to feed the staff there.
Thank you.
And that's the end of my report.
Wow, you guys have been busy. Thank you so much. Do we have any questions? All right, sir, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
All right, can we go ahead and play the video?
Total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the city clerk or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to councilcomments@temeculaca.gov. Speaker cards for in-person comments will be called in the order received by the city clerk, and then if time remains, email comments will be read. Email comments on all matters must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54.
Well, apparently I only own one suit, so, good to see. All right, if we could have our first speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, we only have two comments on non-adjourned items tonight. The first speaker is Bob Cowell, to be followed by Judy Zofacar.
Mr. Cowell, good evening.
Hello there. I've never been vaccinated, but I've had COVID, I had the Delta version and the Omicron version. So I got tested for both, and I have, I've got the antibodies. However, according to a new Rasmussen poll, 59% of Democrats think that I should be made to stay at home unless it's an emergency. 59% of Democrats think that. 40% think that I should be put into a camp, even though I have the antibodies. Something is wrong with that picture. That sounds like what's happening in Europe right now. I have a cousin in Germany, and things over there aren't doing very well. She can't even get out of the house, she's 30 years old. They go out demonstrate, oh, every Monday against the vaccine and the mandates. And one thing that was key to me was to see, 80 years ago, she said, "We had the Nazis", and today, we have the Nazis again. And one thing that sent to me was, if you ever went to Dachau or any of the other ones, you saw Arbeit macht frei, which means "Work makes you free", over the concentration camp that's in metal, it's over the camp entrance. What they have now is, you know, the meme, it says, "Vaccine" in German, V-A-K-C-I-N-E, macht frei. The vaccines make you free. I want to tell you that we don't have to live like this. India, by the way, has tried what I did and made it through, and my family, everybody I know that I've given ivermectin to and other therapeutics has survived, except for one who took it too late, but I had taken those and made it through, and my sister is 72, she made it through. My mother, who is 98 and a half, she lived through COVID. So I recommend that what's going on here is criminal, we ought to make a resolution that what the government and the pharmacies, I know I only 27 seconds, should be considered criminals for what they're doing. And we have to look at India and some other countries that have gone to ivermectin, and Mexico as well, which their rate has dropped dramatically, and their borders are open. Thank you.
The next and last speaker is Judy. Judy, I hope I'm pronouncing it right. Zofacar?
You did a great job. Most people can't pronounce that, so that's awesome. Usually, it's just Judy Z. Thank you and good evening. Today, I'm here representing Rotary District 5330, inviting you to join us in the fight against human trafficking. District 5330 is comprised of 62 clubs and over 2,000 community members and leaders that are people of action in our communities. We are part of over 1.2 million Rotarians worldwide. As you may know, January is National Human Trafficking Awareness Month. What you may not know is human trafficking is amongst the world's fastest-growing criminal enterprise and is estimated to be a $150 billion a year global industry. The International Labor Organization estimates that there are more than 24.9 million human trafficking victims worldwide at any time. The victims of human trafficking are often young girls and women. Young girls and women are 57.6% of forced labor victims and 99.4% of sex trafficking victims. This is not just happening in other countries around the world or other states. This is happening in our own backyard. California consistently has the highest human trafficking rates in the United States, with 1,500 cases reported in 2019, and many cases often go unreported. Many of those victims are here in Riverside County and San Bernardino Counties. With the growth of technology and the use of social media, the buying and selling of human beings has become as easy as a simple click on the keyboard. Sex traffickers and human traffickers are actively targeting children in our community. Rotary District 5330 is dedicated to the fight against human trafficking. We understand that many kids, parents, and community members are not aware of the dangers or what to do if they encounter someone who might be in danger. We have been awarded a grant that will provide free education to 5th and 11th graders in 165 schools in San Bernardino and Riverside Counties. Our district will be working hand-in-hand with school districts and law enforcement to roll out this educational program in our local schools. In addition to that, we are also raising funds to increase awareness, provide community education, and support survivors. We invite you, and all of you, to support this effort and join us on January 29th at the West End Mission Hills and Rancho Mirage for the Rotary District 5330 Community Fundraising Dinner. District Attorney Mike Hestren, CEO of Million Kids Opal Singleton, and survivor Erica London will be speaking at this event. For more information, please visit district5330.org. Thank you so much.
If you could make sure that your contact information gets to the city clerk?
I also passed out the wire.
Perfect, thank you so much. Thank you so much. All right. Let's see. City Council reports. I don't see. Does anybody have anything to? Nothing. Mr. Schwenk.
I do, but I can go after you if you'd like.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, so, thank you. I have a couple of slides, so if we could put up the, yeah, there we go. So much like the city had a National Day of Service yesterday, I sort of organized this with Bike Temecula Valley, Temecula Bike Train, Community Mission of Hope was there, current and former commissioners were there. This is out on the Santa Gertrudas Creek path behind Chafferal High School. We spent a couple of hours out there picking up trash and debris and whatnot. You can see quite a lot came out of that area. Huge thanks to Public Works for picking that up, because my truck was overflowing, and I didn't think I was going to be able to get that all the way back to the store, so thank you for that. Just a great day, working as a community to make our community just a little better, a little cleaner, so wanted to highlight that. And then the next slide is, so at the last Riverside Transit Agency Board meeting, I was unanimously elected to chair the board of RTA. Yeah? Thank you. As an avid transit writer, not only in the region, but when we travel, it's truly an honor just to serve on RTA, but to chair the board is an even greater honor. Many Temecula City Council members have chaired as well, and Jeff Comicharo has chaired, and I believe Ron Roberts chaired it once, maybe twice. So again, truly an honor. You know, I'll continue to work to elevate transit in Riverside and Temecula specifically. A couple of things I want to do this year is really highlight that commuter link route. I know we all, you know, we get some inquiries on that, working with North County Transit District and San Diego NTS to make those connections south, and then just expanding the trolley, that Temecula trolley that runs for our students, and working with the school district to try to make that a reality, to expand that. So I just wanted to let everybody know that I'll be working on some transit issues and representing Temecula regionally, so thank you.
Great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. I just, I had just one quick slide following up with Mayor Pro Tem Schwenk. We did a day of service as well on Monday, joined by a lot of the folks out of the city. We got to do some great cleanup and work. Now, there's one thing that did come out of it, and I'm going to bring this up with the city manager and Pat Thomas as well, is, you know, it was interesting because there were a number of items, let's say, that were cleaned up during the day that were less than family-friendly. And I think, you know, that has become, I think, an unfortunate thing in a lot of communities. And we know it's related to some of the businesses and some of the alcohol sales and things that are happening, and not to belabor the point, but we simply have to do better in Old Town to maintain that family-friendly and safe environment. So I'd like to make sure that we take this not just as a lesson, but to reach out to our local businesses, because, you know, they have a responsibility to keep Temecula safe as well, and police some of the products that are making their way out of their front door. And so I'd like to make sure that we have a concerted effort, and this may be one of those things that, as we start to revitalize the Old Town Local Review Board, this could be one of those things that becomes one of their charges. But rather than wait for that, let's see if we can, with the consent of my colleagues here, just sort of jump on that quickly and start doing a little bit better outreach and education for our local businesses, because it's just, you know, in my mind, it's just unacceptable. That may happen in other cities, but should not be happening here. Okay. Moving on, we now have the consent calendar, and I have happily recorded a video on that one as well, in the same suit.
All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the city clerk or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to councilcomments@temeculascad.gov. Speaker cards for in-person comments will be called in the order received by the city clerk, and then if time remains, email comments will be read. Email comments on all matters must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by resolution number 2021-54.
All right. Way to go, Matt. So item number one, oh, do we have any speakers?
We do not have any public comments on consent calendar items.
Great. Then let's move on. Item number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolution. Number two, approve action minutes of December 14, 2021. Number three, approve list of demands. Number four, approve annual citywide records retention schedule and records destruction for calendar year 2022. Five, approve annual legislative platform for calendar year 2022. Six, approve annual boards and commissions handbook for calendar year 2022. Seven, approve second amendment to the agreement with Placeworks Inc. for the creation of objective design standards. Item number eight, adopt resolution approving the purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of an approximate 325 square foot permanent easement on the real property located south of Nicholas Road and west of Butterfield Stage Road, APNs 957130003 and 957130013, in connection with drainage flood control and flood channel improvements along the Santa Gertrudas Creek. And item number nine, establish an always stop control at the intersection of Roar Paw Road and Swallow Court. I am looking for a motion in a second.
I'll move consent.
Second.
And that passes unanimously. So I'm going to go ahead and recess council meeting to the meeting of the Community Services District.
And I will take over from there. Uh huh.
Looking in the wrong direction.
Uh huh. So roll call, please.
President Stewart, we have noted that all board of directors are still present.
Perfect. Is there any public comment?
There are no public comments.
Perfect. I will dispense with a reading of that. So alls we have is item number 10 on the consent calendar, which is to approve the action minutes of December 14, 2021.
Motion.
Second.
All right. It's been motioned and seconded. Please vote. That passes 5-0. So directors report. Do we have a direct? Yes, we do. Here she comes.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. So for this evening, I just wanted to bring your attention to our Winter Spring 2022 Activity Guide. We publish these twice a year, and President Stewart and I had the opportunity to meet the other day, and he said, you know, "It's really nice to feel this nice and thick again." And for a couple of years, we had to cut out a lot of programs due to COVID. We had to, you know, restrict a lot of our offerings, and it got kind of thin, but we're back up. We're offering a lot of new programs. We're doing everything safely and inclusively and really expanding our offerings. Each of you received a copy of this. If you ever need another one, you just let me know. And for our members of the audience, there are some out there in the lobby. Additionally, this gets mailed to every household in the city of Temecula twice a year. So this one covers January through May. We're extremely excited to bring all these things back online, and if you flip through it, you'll see a little yellow bubble with the word "new" in it next to a bunch of programs, and we're extremely proud of that as well. So that's all I have this evening, unless you have any questions.
No questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. General managers' report. Do we have any?
Nothing further tonight, Mr. President.
All right. And any directors' reports? None seen? So I will adjourn this meeting and turn it back over to the city council, or SARDA.
Okay. And I will go ahead and open up the meeting for the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, otherwise known as SARDA. We could just note that all of us are still here. Do we have any public comments this evening?
We do not.
All right. And on our consent calendar, we have one item. Approve recognized obligation payment schedule and administrative budget for the period July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, ROPS 2223. We get a report on that.
Mr. Mayor, this is the consent calendar item.
Ah, right. Sorry, I'm out of practice. It's been a couple of years. All right. How about a motion, then?
A motion.
Second.
Okay, and that passes unanimously. Do we have an executive director's report?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Any board of directors' reports? No. Okay. So then we will go ahead and have our next regular meeting of SARDA on January 25th at 5:30 for a closed session with regular session at 7:00. Go ahead and reconvene the Temecula City Council. We didn't get to the business items. Did we record something for this one?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Good.
Any member of the public may address the city council on items that appear on the business portion of the agenda. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the city clerk or by submitting an email to be read aloud into the record at the meeting. Email comments must be submitted to councilcomments@temeculascad.gov. Speaker cards for in-person comments will be called in the order received by the city clerk, and then if time remains, email comments will be read. Email comments on all matters must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by resolution number 2021-54.
All right. Okay, so first item of the evening is number 12. Consider appointments to city council committees for calendar year 2022. So, yes?
Do we have printed copies of all the current assignments? All of my emails disappeared.
Uh oh. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Everybody else good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So typically, we just kind of work down the list here. I think we've all done this before, so we'll just let the show begin. Let's start with the Community Services Commission here. Current member is Mr. Schwenk.
I'll take that one.
Mr. Stewart, are we good with that?
No, absolutely. That's fine.
All right. We'll write Mr. Stewart for that. Old Town Local Review Board.
I'd like to keep it.
Any objections?
Nope.
All right. Sounds good. Planning Commission. Mr. Stewart.
Something's got to give, and we can't do two of them.
I don't care. I mean, unless Zach wanted that one.
Yeah, we can switch. It would be nice to, you know, familiarize myself with a different commission, so that's totally fine.
Okay.
Any objections to that?
Nope.
All right. Let's see. Public Traffic Safety Commission, it's currently.
Aye.
Mary Ann. You want to stay there?
Oh, yes.
Anybody want to fight for it? All right. Moving on, then. Ready Commission, myself and Ms. Edwards.
I'm good.
I will say, I do recall the conversation was Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem on the ready, so I'd certainly like to fulfill that.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Wow, this is easy. All right. So let's move on, then, to standing committees. These are all two-member committees. Start with the first one, Arts and Cultural Affairs Subcommittee, currently Edwards and Schwenk.
We're very artistic.
And we work well together, so that's good.
Anybody want to? All right. We'll keep that one the same. Sustainability Program Subcommittee, it's myself and Mr. Stewart. Any desires there?
I'm fine with me.
All right. E-Government and Temecula Outreach, Edwards, Schwenk.
I'm good.
Yep, I'm fine.
Okay. Economic Development Subcommittee, Edwards and Stewart.
Yeah, we like working together on that one.
Good. You've been doing a good job at that one. How about the Old Town Steering Committee, Alexander and Schwenk?
I'll stay on it. I'm good.
Yeah, I like it.
All right. Let's see. Finance Subcommittee, Edwards and Ron.
I'm good.
I'd like to stay on that one if I can.
Me, too.
All right. Infrastructure Beautification Subcommittee, Edwards and Stewart.
Stu has a very good eye.
Well, then, that sounds good to me. Anyone else? No? All right. We're counting on you there, Stu.
Yeah, I'm doing it.
All right. Joint City Council TVUSD Subcommittee, it's myself and Mr. Schwenk. We didn't really have much, we started off with that one with the bang in 2019, and then kind of haven't been able to get together since. Anybody have a burning desire to want to hang out with the?
Yeah.
All right. Well, then, we'll leave that one where it is. Military Subcommittee, Alexander and Schwenk.
I'll keep that one if I can.
Yeah, I'd like to stay there as well.
All right. The Move I-15 Through Temecula Valley Subcommittee, myself and Ms. Edwards.
Yes, I like being on that one.
Yeah, we need to kickstart that again.
Yeah, it's good, yes. I was just going to say.
Now, with all the billions in transportation funds, maybe we'll see some additional funding go there. Okay. Myrieta Temecula Subcommittee, Alexander and Edwards.
Do we even need this one anymore?
I don't know. We've got a lot of new park stuff coming up, I think. Isn't that right?
This is the Myrieta Temecula one, right?
Oh, the Myrieta Temecula, I'm sorry. I'm going to go to the next one. I'm step ahead.
When was the last time we used that?
Oh, I can't even remember.
It's been a while, but I certainly think it's still relevant to assign a subcommittee.
You know, we should do something, because they have new council members that I haven't even met yet.
Well, you know, yeah, and I think we should, right? I think everybody should probably respectively, you know, Mayor Ingram and I have talked, you know, back when he and I were mayor in, what was it, '18? We got together with all the regional mayors up and down, all the way up to Elsinore, I think it was, at the time. And then that kind of disappeared after that.
No, we're still doing that.
Yeah? Okay, good. Good. So we're going to try and keep that thing alive and, you know.
It's very, getting all the mayors together is eye-opening, and it's very helpful to hear, you know, we have a lot of the same issues, and sometimes we hear about different issues, and we learn new procedures and policies, and so that's really, really beneficial.
Good. If you wouldn't mind, just on that one, just as some of the recent conversation, one of the things that Mayor Ingram and I were talking about have to do with the I-15 corridor, and it's not exactly the same, but it's related to the amount of trash and things that we're seeing along the corridor. And I know there's all these restrictions now, you know, it used to be where you just adopt a highway, you go out there with your bags and pick it up, and it is not that easy. There's so much liability and layers of bureaucracy on picking up garbage now.
And nobody's picking it up.
And nobody's doing it. So maybe we can kind of kickstart that through that committee and see what we can get done on there. That'd be a good reason to get them.
Yeah, I talked to the city manager about that, you know, a while back, and Caltrans is just not following through. And as we get our new improvements on our off-ramps, you know, we want the rest of the freeway along there to be beautified as well.
Definitely. Cool. Let's see. Parks, Rec., and Community Services Subcommittee, Alexander and Schwenk.
Did we vote on that one?
Oh, yeah. That one was Alexander and Edwards for the Myrieta Temecula. Are we good?
Oh, are you good? Okay.
I'd like to see that, yeah. That'd be great. Thank you. Okay. Parks and Rec. and Community Services, Alexander, Schwenk.
I would like to go on that one.
Yeah, and I want to stay as well.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll step down.
Okay. Thank you. You guys are making this too easy. Public Works Subcommittee, myself and Ms. Edwards.
I like Public Works.
Me, too. Anybody want that one? Burning desire to talk about potholes and, you know? Fascinating, you guys have no idea. All right.
Yeah.
Let's see, what else do we have? Okay, so representative assignments, external organizations. The first one is the Animal Shelter Liaison, JPA Representative, currently Mr. Schwank.
Congratulations.
So I was going to offer this up, this is really difficult with my schedule, so if there's someone that feels like they can take it, it's just a difficult time, which I understand, so if there's anyone that's interested. Staff's been great, they've been all virtual, unfortunately, but I'll certainly serve if no one else wants to, but it doesn't work well with my schedule.
What time is it at?
You know what, I'm, I'm drawing a blank on it at this point, but.
Anybody know?
It was, it was like 2:00 or something like.
I can take it back, I mean, I was on it for what?
I mean, don't get me wrong, I love the animals, it's a great organization.
We are so lucky to have that shelter.
Yeah.
Just for us and the five cities that partner and that partner with us.
I'll try to, I'll just try to make it work. I'll figure it out.
Okay.
All right, so you're going to stick with the pets. How about League in California Cities and National League of Cities, myself and Mr. Schwank?
I think you've done a great job.
Anybody have a burning desire to?
No, I'll stay there, I like it.
All right, let's keep it the same. Pachanga Tribal Council Representative, currently Ms. Edwards.
I would like to keep that one.
Pretty good with that? All right. Rancho California Water District Liaison, always makes sense to have Mr. Stewart there, you want to continue?
Yeah.
All right, and alternate, Mr. Schwank?
Yeah, I'm fine.
All right. Southwest Riverside County Energy Authority, JPA, Edwards and Schwank.
Yep, I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
All right, and then Temecula Sister City Liaison, Mr. Schwank?
I'd like to try that one if possible this year, if, you know.
So the only thing I'd say is there's a meeting coming up that, that's already on my calendar that I think kind of goes back a couple of years, that I'd at least like to finish.
Yeah.
Finish it out. Just given what's on the horizon with it, if that's okay with you?
As far as, so you want to finish the year then on that one?
Yeah.
I just don't have any on that one for, okay.
Well, you could have the animal shelter.
I can't, I'd love to, but I'm working. All right, yeah, go ahead.
You can't trade an animal shelter for.
That's not a one-to-one.
That's all good, go ahead.
Like, you're going to have to throw in a kicker on that.
Who gets insulted on that one?
Yeah.
Go ahead, it's all good.
All right. Okay, we'll keep that where it is. All right, and then we have five representative assignments for external organizations, starting with the WRCOG, Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Authority, I'm sorry, the RCA, not WRCOG.
Right.
RCA, currently Edwards.
I'd like to stay on that one.
I would like to go on one of these, and, and I think it's important for us to split these duties up, only because you're making a lot of connections with a lot of people regionally. And I think it's, it's a little lopsided when, you know, I mean, Mary Ann's got three of them, and it's like, it, it shouldn't be three, it should be, you know, I think we need to split these duties up, because it's the relationships that we build.
Yes.
That are super important, so, yeah.
Agree.
We kind of backfilled a little bit, you know, a couple of years ago, which is why it's kind of lopsided that way. And I'll just be honest, you know, RCA for me is where I want to be.
Sure.
The other two alternates, I would, anyone can fill in there, totally happy with that.
Stu, if you'd like, RCTC, I'm happy to.
No, I want RCTC.
Then I'll take WRCOG.
How about I take the first one?
I was WRCOG anyways.
Yeah? That's right.
Yeah.
Whoever has, I would just say, whoever has RCTC.
Needs to stay on WRCOG.
Needs to probably, well, because RCA has now been subsumed under RCTC, right? And so I would say that that relationship is, just for continuity between that, maybe makes sense, but.
It does and it doesn't, because I was on both of those, and they have completely different goals in mind, so.
They do.
Yeah, so I, I don't think they necessarily have to be under the same umbrella.
Okay, so let's see, we've got.
So how about I take RCA? Are you good with that?
Well, why don't you take, it'd probably be better if you take RCHCA.
That's what I was suggesting.
Oh, that was the one, as I was, yes.
Yes.
I'm going to take that one.
Because that's a great, that's a great one, just to get to know your county supervisors, your other people in the region, and it's, it's a great relationship builder.
And we're in the process of delisting or downlisting the Stevens Kangaroo rep.
Right.
So it's really interesting, and you can take a tour of the reserve, it's really nice.
Sounds good. All right, I'll take that one.
All right, so RCA is going to be Ms. Alexander, RCA, RCA. RCA, who's staying, are you staying on RCA then?
Which one did you want to stay on, Mary Ann?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, can I, can I back up just a second?
Yes.
So for, for RCA, I still have Councilmember Schwank and Councilmember Edwards as the alternate. For RCHCA, I have Councilmember Alexander for the primary, who's the alternate?
I'll be the alternate.
Okay.
Okay, Stu.
Okay, now for RCA, I need a primary and an alternate.
I'd be happy to do art, no, yeah.
You want WRCOG?
Yeah, 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 I would love to be on WRCOG.
Mary Ann, do you want to stay?
No, I want to keep WRCOG and RCTC, because they involve the same, basically the same group of leaders talking about generating revenue for the county and for each of the cities, so they each have a common, we have a common interest, so those two, so I'd like to hang on to WRCOG and take on RCTC, which I have been the alternate for.
Can I just make one, and I don't want to put Mr. Schwank on the spot, but combining the same person for RCTC and RCA also makes sense too, but I don't want to add more to your plate if you're.
Are you talking about the alternate RCTC?
Well, either alternate or, or regular.
I'd really like to take that one. So that, that leaves me with WRCOG and then RCTC, so I'm not, I'm no longer on RCA or RCHCA.
So I've always had an interest in RCTC as well.
So have I. So have I. In all these years, I haven't been able to serve, so I thought as the alternate now, with Matt stepping down, this, that would make sense. So if you just let me take that one, and we'll see, see how it goes, especially with all that we're doing on the I-15 freeway and the issues that we have with Tump right now.
I know, but again, it goes back to, I think it's, it's better, it makes a more well-rounded city council if you have more of us involved in that process, not just because, you know, yeah, so what, they, they, they parallel each other, you know, I, I think it's still better if we have one city councilman on each one of those. I, I don't, I don't think just because they parallel each other that, you know, we should keep the same person, if anything, that's when we should let someone else be part of that process and understand it.
Exactly.
So not just one person has all that information.
Okay.
So that, that's my.
And I agree, just because it gives us a, a bigger perspective, you know, you might see something differently than Matt, Ron, and so that way we can work collaboratively to be able to, to really get it done in a better fashion, I guess, so.
Well, then I, that's going to leave me one, are you saying?
Everybody gets one, that's what we're saying.
That's what I'm saying.
I'd like to move to RCTC then.
Then I'll take WRCOG.
Well, I will hit someone over the head with Matt's gavel for RCA, so.
Yeah, RCA is yours.
So RCA, so.
I mean, you have to be RCA, you're the gem.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
You're RCHCA, who's RCA then?
Well, I have been forever.
Because, so Mayor Ron, are you not taking one, is that the, is that what we're kind of getting to?
I'm just saying that, you know, if, if, you know, because I, I don't disagree with what Mary Ann's saying on the RCA and, and RCTC.
Yeah.
I think there is a strong connection between those two, and I'm seeing that at least now, a lot of the same members, once those were subsumed, it's kind of where I started, it would be nice to keep that continuity, because there is a lot of overlap between those two.
And if Matt's not taking any of these, somebody's got to be on two of them.
No, I mean, I don't mind stepping up, but I'm just saying if it's going to be that way, I wouldn't mind seeing you serve on both, and I don't mind stepping back on that.
One of the things that's important too is, is as you get into a role at one of these external agencies, building those relationships there for a while does good, it gets you on
Oh, it does really good.
an. It gets you on an executive committee, it gets you to chair the board, right? It gets influence in, so, you know, there's that to think about as well.
And I've been on RCA's executive committee for years, and it really does give us, well, it gives us advance notice of what's going on with RCA and with the acquisition of land for the MSHCP, so, and then that does tie in also with RCTC.
Okay, so I'm going to try and help out our city clerk here.
Right.
So RCA is Edwards, and our alternate, alternate is?
I would do it.
Everybody good with that?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
And you know, I would say if you're an alternate on one of these committees, you need to go, you need to attend those meetings, it's okay for you to go even with the primary representative there.
Right.
Because it's a great way to learn, and some of these, well, every single one of these is so complex. And then you know you're the sole representative for the city of Temecula, so you really need to be up to speed, so I say go to them and learn, there's no, nothing that prohibits you from doing that.
Definitely. All right, RCHCA is Alexander, and our alternate is?
Do what? I had Stu down, I think. Yeah, I had Stu for alternate on that one.
I don't care, I'll, I'll be an alternate on everything. It really does matter.
So which one are we having?
Now, wait a minute, what happened to the well-rounded story?
All right, so how about this, I haven't stepped up into any of the, the alternates, so maybe that would be a good one for me.
Yeah, there you go.
Let's do it.
Yeah, that would be a good.
You're the primary though.
You're the primary on that one. Oh, I am.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
I'll do both.
That's the one I told you you could. There's too many letters going right now.
I'll, I'll do the alternate on that one.
RCHCA and RCA are, it's confusing. But they do have two different purposes, so.
All right, so that one is Alexander and Ron.
Correct.
Okay, RCTC.
Me.
That is.
Thank you.
And Schwank, right?
And I'll, and I'll alternate RCTC.
Thank you. All right, RCA is Schwank with the alternate as?
Yeah.
Edwards, okay. And then lastly, we have Mr. Stewart as WRCOG with an alternate of?
I'll hit that one.
Alexander, perfect.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'm, I, I need to repeat this, just so that we're making sure that we're all, we're all good here. So for RCA, the primary is Edwards, the alternate is Stewart. For RCHCA, the primary is Alexander, the alternate is Ron. For RCTC, the primary is Edwards, the alternate is Schwank. For RCA, the primary is Schwank, the alternate is Edwards. And for WRCOG, the primary is Stewart and the alternate is Alexander.
Yes.
And just to note that in some cities, every city does this differently, but in some cities, one person does all of this. And that's a lot for one person, especially when you're driving back and forth to Riverside. So this is good.
Okay, now, we are down to the ad hoc committees, two members on these. First one up is Alter Property Ad Hoc Subcommittee, myself and Ms. Edwards.
I think we should stay on that one just because of what's going on with Alter, unless you don't want to.
I'm good staying on there just to see that one through.
Yeah, me too.
All right, Community Services Funding, Alexander and Schwank.
Yeah, I'd like to stay there.
I'd like to go on it.
You want to go on that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, Mr. Stewart, Mr. Schwank.
And who's the, who's the primary?
There's no primary.
Nope.
Oh, it's, these are the ad hocs, sorry.
All right, Diaz Property, myself and Ms. Edwards.
Yeah, something's going to happen with that one of these days.
I'd like to see something happen this year, maybe.
Yeah.
Anybody burning desire on that one? No? How about French Valley Parkway Interchange?
No, I'm, yeah, I'm going to stay on that one too, because that, that melds with the I-15, you know, I-15 Subcommittee.
Next one is General Plan Update.
Yeah, I, I like to stay on that one because it's nice to know, it's nice to have a history of the general plan and the changes that have taken place over all these years and
Sure.
what worked and what didn't work, so I'd like to stay on that one.
I'd ask the city manager, for continuity purposes, is it easier to, because I know you update the rest of the council on this as well.
Yeah, we, we absolutely will adjust to whatever decisions you guys make, so just, if you're on a subcommittee, you're, you're running lead, but it doesn't mean if you're not on the subcommittee that you're not in the know, and I'll make every effort to keep all five of you, you know, informed of subcommittee business, whether it's ad hoc or standing.
I wouldn't mind being on that.
Yeah, I was thinking, you know, it's a great committee to be on, but, yeah, spread that one around, I think, a little bit, because it is such a big deal.
The general plan too, I mean, this is a multi-year project, we started, you know, last year, and it'll, it'll go into 2023 as well, so.
I'm good.
So, you're good with me doing it?
Yeah, please.
Perfect.
All right, so that would be Edwards and Stewart. Higher Ed Ad Hoc Subcommittee, myself and Ms. Edwards.
I'd like to jump on that if either of you would rather pop up.
Now, what this is, it is not like our TVUSD slash Temecula Subcommittee. This is working with attracting and retaining higher colleges and universities in town, so just to be clear, so everybody knows what that is.
I think you do great on that.
But if I'm sensing no one wants off, then that's fine too.
No, you can take that, you can take that one, did you want that one? Yeah, you can take that one.
Okay.
I'll stay on.
So Matt and Zach, right?
Sounds good. The, okay, Hospital Ad Hoc Subcommittee.
I'd like a run at that one.
Ah, yeah, I'd like to stay on that one too, just with, Temecula Valley Hospital is going through another huge expansion, and in case we have any issues like we did the last time.
Yeah, I'd like to stay on that one too, I, just because we've got that plan moving forward, especially the behavioral health, but that's.
Yes, I think, I think that's probably a good choice with the expansion and the behavioral health, and I don't think they've got that completely ironed out yet, and especially how that dovetails with responsible compassion.
All right.
So I'd like to stand on that one too.
I'd like to do it, I mean, I think it would be just really good for me, I've been getting involved, you know, I really enjoyed the last meeting that we had with them, and, you know, just getting caught up, and especially, I know I'm still a new council member, but I think there'll be a lot to add on my behalf too, so, I'll leave it up to you two, I know you guys are senior council members, so.
Well, do you want to stay on that one, Matt?
I'd like to.
I would like to stay on it too.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to give that one at least, uh, just this year, just to see that one through.
All right.
Yeah. Let's see, where did we leave off here? Human, human ser- no, yeah, Human Services.
I'll take that one.
That's Alexander and Edwards.
Yep. That one's been a good one.
Okay. Infill Land Use and Project Review Ad Hoc Subcommittee, that's myself and Ms. Edwards.
Yeah, and I think that one's important too because we have so little space left.
And I would like to be on that one, if I can. If you're good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we're losing the luxury car and we're moving on to Margarita Rec Center Subcommittee, Alexander Schwank right now.
Do you want to take that one, Stu?
Stu, you should be on that one too.
It just all goes together.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
And Mr. Schwank?
Yeah, I'll stay on. We're, we're wrapping this up, so it'd be nice to finish it off.
All right, and then we have a new one here, Memorial and Monument Policy Ad Hoc Subcommittee.
Stu, that was your deal, wasn't it?
That's definitely Stu, yeah, absolutely.
I think I'm gonna jump on that with Stu. Yeah, it'd be good. You mind?
Cool.
Okay.
If I'm, if I may, my only concern is, um, with that, is that, um, there could potentially be a slight conflict because you brought forward an item. You know, that's my only concern with it.
Well, I just brought up an item from another member, so that was all that was, so.
No, I understand. That's just my concern, so I'm just, I'm just sort of airing my concerns.
Well, you want to ask Peter?
I don't think it rises to that level. I'm just.
I don't either. I don't either. I mean, it, it's very common for somebody to propose an idea and then serve on the Subcommittee.
And you gotta remember too, this is gonna be a, uh, this is, we're gonna be doing a lot of legwork with the staff already, so, and you guys are gonna be updated on absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
That's done, so.
Well, and the policy, I mean, this isn't a permanent, uh, uh, committee, it's just, am I, am I understanding if we're, this is just to create the policy for that, and the full council would weigh in on the final product?
I believe so.
And then we're gonna vote on it as a whole anyways, you know, so if there's something we don't like, we can always go back, change it, and.
The discussion was how do we choose people to memorialize?
Right.
Exactly.
That was what.
And what types of memorials?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And where?
And where?
Yeah.
All right. I mean, we, we just know that the Subcommittee drives it a certain way and then you're put in a position on, you know, up here, you can vote however you want.
Right.
But it, it, the Subcommittee does a lot of the legwork, right? You drive, you drive the conversation, so.
Do you want to take it?
I do not want it.
No.
I think she'll be fine. I do. I, I thi- I think we'll, we'll be able to.
Yeah. We're adults. We can put our boy pants on and girl pants on. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Fair enough. Good. Okay. Uh, Marietta Creek, myself and Mr. Schwank.
Yeah, I'll, I'll stay on that.
Anybody desire to?
No, congratulations.
I know, right?
Congratulations.
I will stay on that one then. Old Town Civic Center, Alexander and Stewart.
It'd make sense for me to stay on since I'm Old Town Subcommittee, or the other one.
What even does this do? I don't think I've had a single meeting on this.
Mr. City Manager.
We, I don't believe we did convene this Subcommittee last year, and it's probably been some time. Have to look at the description here in the staff report.
This one was actually started when we decided to build City Hall here and.
But it's, it's been used for, um, conversation and discussion, um, around, um, I believe, the Civic Quad. You know, when we were, uh, you know, that's part of this property.
Yeah.
Um, so development there or recognition, and we did the Jim, uh, the Jimmy Moore. I believe we, we shepherded it through that Subcommittee as well, so.
I'm fine staying there. I don't care, yeah.
Okay.
It's a good one.
Yeah.
Mr. City Manager, the, um, the specific description indicates that this particular Subcommittee is, um, gonna stay in place, uh, through the disposition and development of the agency-owned property for Town Square. So that's there as well.
Okay. Yeah, get that done.
Yeah, right?
Yeah.
Working hard.
All right.
Got to find someone to, uh.
Well, you've got 12 months.
All right.
All right, uh, let's see, Police Base of Operations Ad Hoc Subcommittee, it's myself and Mr. Stewart. We haven't really had a chance to vet that one yet all the way through, so I'm, I'm happy staying on that till we do.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, anybody else have a, all right. Uh, Promenade in Temecula, Edwards and Schwank.
I'd like to stay on that one because I've developed a relationship with Jeff Kurtz, who's the manager of the mall, and they have changed hands, oh, in the last two years, and so I'd kind of like to stay on that one.
And if anyone wants on, I'd be happy to step aside.
Oh, I'll take that one.
Okay.
Yeah. Randy looks at me like, what?
Well, you need to get over there and buy another suit.
Yeah. I know, right? Yeah, I need to get at least two suits, so.
I'm just saying.
All right, good. Let's do it. Um, Public Safety.
I'd like to jump on that one this year.
All right, I'd like to stay on it because we're.
Congratulations.
So, sounds good. All right. Uh, Somers Bend.
So, Mr. Mayor, um, the public safety, um, Councilmember Alexander is coming on and Councilmember Edwards is stepping off?
Mm-hmm.
Sounds good. Somers Bend.
We had a good meeting today, though.
Yeah, we talked about grocery carts. Um, Edwards Schwank on Somers Bend.
I'm good with, with staying on that one, and we've got a dedication coming up.
Yeah, let's keep you both on there. I'd like to see that one through. You guys have been solid.
It's been rarely, I mean, it's been fairly trouble-free.
Yeah, we've been doing a lot of hard work. It's been amazing.
No problem. Surface level assessments, uh, that one's, that's always a fascinating one.
Yeah, I'll, I'll stay on that. I, I don't mind, I don't mind that topic.
No, I'm fine too.
All right. Boy, sh- are, one of our favorite ones, short-term vacation rentals.
I'll go on it if someone wants off.
Well, that, someone would be Zach, because Zach's name is on there.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't mind staying on. I don't mind hopping off either. Um, we had, we haven't, I don't think we met in maybe 10, 12 months, but.
I think we said we were gonna review after a certain length of time.
Staff were gonna, they were gonna bring back something this, this year, um, right? I think, yeah. I don't mind jumping off that one either. I mean, again, that's, that's one of those that any ordinances that are created will be brought to the full council, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
It, uh, Stu, you and I were the first members of that one originally, I think, so if you want to join with, uh, Zach, that'd be fine.
Sure.
Yeah, that's fine.
Anybody else have a?
Yeah, if anyone.
That's good.
If anyone else wants it, go for it.
You don't want it?
Short term.
No, it's, it's, spread it out, but I don't mind having the conversation. It was a good Subcommittee.
Yeah.
Okay, all yours.
Okay, so Strategic Fiscal Planning Ad Hoc.
Um, I like that one.
I'd like to stay on until we bring that one piece to fruition on the ARPA, yeah, if that's okay?
Yeah.
All right.
Some of these are long-term.
Yep.
But, yeah.
Supportive Housing, myself and Mr. Schwank. That one I'd like to stay on because I think we're finally getting some traction on some project
Yes.
proposals and ideas here, um, and I've had some good success with some of our community members as well.
Yeah, I would agree. I would want to stay on. We've been making some good progress.
Great. Trails and Open Space, Alexander and Schwank.
Did you want off? Because I'll take that if.
It's all, well, it goes along with what you've been doing, so, yeah, keep it together, so I figured, keep it together.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Okay.
All right, so that's Stewart and Schwank. Uh, TVE Two, Schwank and Stewart?
I'd like to try that one.
Yeah, I'm happy to step aside.
All right. Stewart and Alexander then. Uh, Uptown Temecula, Edwards and Ron.
Yeah, I do want to stay on that one because that, uh, that is definitely a long-term project, and we've had several productive meetings so far. It's a, right now, we're in the conceptual stages and actually trying to sell that project to interested parties for redevelopment. So I'd like to stay on that one.
I'd be okay jumping off if anybody wants to.
I'm gonna jump on that one.
It's a, it's a good one. I think there's a lot of work that can be done there, yeah.
Sounds good.
And then the last one, we're losing the Winchester Hills, but our last one is Wall of Honor Ad Hoc with Alexander and Edwards.
I'd like to work with you again if we can.
Yeah, that's a good one too, to have, um, some history, so if you're doing the Wall of Honor, you know the people who are proposed, so I think that's a good, that's a good team.
All right, and that rounds out, uh, the playlist.
Mr. Mayor, if, um, it is okay with you at this point, I would just like to go ahead and review all of the entire list one way through and then ask for, um, a motion.
All right, I did not take many notes, so.
I did, so I think, I think I'm okay.
Let's do it.
All right. Community Services Commission, the liaison is Councilmember Stewart. Old Town Local Review Board, Alexander Planning Commission, Schwank. Public Traffic Safety Commission, Edwards. Ready is, um, is, um, Schwank and Ron. And then, uh, Arts and Cultural, Edwards Schwank. City Sustainability, Ron Stewart. E-Government, Edwards Schwank. Economic Development, Edwards Stewart. Old Town Steering, Alexander Schwank. Finance, Edwards Ron. Infrastructure, Edwards Stewart. TV USD Joint, Ron Schwank. Military, Alexander Schwank. I-15, Edwards Ron. Marietta Temecula, Alexander Edwards. Parks Recreation Community Services, Schwank and Stewart. Public Works, uh, Edwards Ron. Southwest Cities Coalition is gone. Animal Shelter, Schwank. League of California Cities, Ron Schwank. National League of Cities, Ron Schwank. Pachanga, Edwards. Ranch California Water District, Stewart with the alternate, primary is Stewart, alternate is Schwank. The Southwest Riverside County Energy Authority, JPA, Edwards Schwank. Sister Cities, Schwank. And then, um, RCA is Edwards primary, Stewart alternate. RCHCA is Alexander primary, Ron alternate. RCTC is Edwards primary, Schwank is alternate. RTA is Schwank primary, Edwards is alternate. And WR cog is Stewart primary and Alexander is alternate. Alter, Edwards Ron. Community Service Funding is, um, Stewart and Schwank. Diaz, Edwards Ron. French Valley, Edwards Ron. General Plan, Edwards and Stewart. Higher Education, Ron and Schwank. Hospital, Edwards Ron. Human Services, Alexander Edwards. Infill, Edwards Stewart. Luxury Car Dealership is gone. Margarita Rec Center is Schwank and Stewart. Memorial Monument Subcommittee is Alexander Stewart. Marietta Creek, Ron Schwank. Old Town Civic Center, Alexander Stewart. Police Base is Ron Stewart. Promenade is Edwards Ron. Public Safety is Alexander Ron. Roar Paw Ranch, Somers Bend, Edwards Schwank. Service Level Assessment, Schwank Stewart. Short-Term Vacation Rental, Schwank Stewart. Strategic Planning, Edwards Ron. Supportive Housing, Ron Schwank. Trails and Open Space, Schwank and Stewart. TV, uh, small, TVE Two is Alexander Stewart. Uptown Temecula, Edwards Alexander. Wall of Honor, Alexander Edwards. And Winchester Hills is gone.
I will move that.
Well, second.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. And that is approved, 5-2-0. All right, thank you all, that was fun. All right, item number 13 now, Consider State and Federal Legislative Mandates at the Request of Myself. Do we have any public comment on this one?
We do have one emailed public comment on this one.
Great. If you could.
Uh, yes, happy to go ahead and read that into the record. Okay, and the comment is from Rick Reese. While I am somewhat relieved that the City Council is finally attempting to counter the constant power grabs emanating from Sacramento and Washington DC, since I have in the past implored you to take a stand against these unethical and perhaps even unconstitutional power grabs, unfortunately, now this is much like closing the proverbial barn door after the horse has bolted. The City of Temecula had an opportunity to take more of a leadership role on this issue, but you are now playing catch-up as even the Marietta City Council fights back against the state's goals of packing and stacking to their credit. Since last year, many other cities like Oceanside and San Marcos have already organized to challenge Sacramento via consolidated lawsuits, lobbying, and by advancing a proposed statewide ballot initiative to overturn the power grab by the governor and state legislature. In the item 13 agenda, it specifically mentions the city continues to actively engage on the legislative front through its state and federal lobbyists and professional associations when it comes to power grabs like SB eight, SB nine, and SB 10. I respectfully submit to you that one professional association in particular has done absolutely nothing to stand up against this Politburo-style planning emanating from Sacramento at the expense of self-governing free agency, California Cities. I am specifically referring to the self-absorbed and crony League of California Cities. The LCC, a state subsidiary of the even more self-absorbed and crony National League of Cities, seems to just follow its national parent by further promoting far-left wing policies, politically correct naval gazing, and divisive racial and purported equity schemes. In the meantime, the danger that twisted laws like SB eight, SB nine, and SB 10 will do to our neighborhoods will result in an overloading of our traffic, water, sewage, electrical, utility, and other vital services, and so many of our neighborhoods were planned as single-family home developments with rated capacities for all these services. The governor and legislature's power-grabbing laws are, if anything, truly anti-diversity. These centralized dictates from Sacramento ignore the unique cultures, traditions, geographies, and histories of the diverse regions and jurisdictions that comprise California. These laws will result in a Sacramento-directed Politburo cookie style, cookie-cutter style of human development and activity throughout California. These demented policies will result in more pollution, more crime, more traffic, overburdened services, and more chaos. Temecula and other like-minded cities do not and should not seek to emulate the chaotic and dehumanizing policies that are prevalent in such urban wastelands as Los Angeles, Oakland, and San Francisco. I urge you and everyone to support the brand-wing Mendoza tripartisan land use initiative and to organize to oppose the Soviet-style centralized power grab by Sacramento by visiting our neighborhood voices at stopsacramento.org. This is a Jeffersonian maxim that goes, government closest to the people governs best. A core tenet of small, quote, "our" republicanism. If you allow Sacramento to strip away local authority and local governance, then there is no point to being an incorporated city. The City Council will just become a rubber stamp for Sacramento's edicts. And despite what so many intellectually lazy politician and pundits like to say, we are not a democracy, but rather a pub, a republic. The ever-so-wise Benjamin Franklin pondered many things about liberty, including democracy as two wolves and a lamb voting on what to have for lunch. Liberty is a well-armed lamb contesting the vote. Lastly, there is the story often told that upon exiting the Constitutional Convention, Benjamin Franklin was approached by a group of citizens asking what sort of government the delegates had created. His answer was, "A republic if you can keep it." I urge you, City Council, to stand up and defend Temecula, stand for a republic. Thank you for your time and consideration. Mr. Mayor, that's the only, um, public comment that we had on this item.
Okay, well, um.
I do have a, I do have a comment that I'd like to make regarding that, uh, public comment.
Sure, sure, go right there.
So, I know there were accusations that Temecula is not doing anything, but Temecula is very active when it comes to, um, meetings in Sacramento and Washington DC. I've been to Sacramento many, many times. That's Mr. Ron's, Dr. Ron's home away from home practically, as he moves through the halls of the Assembly and the Senate on behalf of Temecula, and I'd say the same thing about Washington DC. We are ready at a moment's notice to do anything, and we've done those, I mean, we've responded to, um, things that we do not like many times at a moment's notice. So, we also belong to the, to the California League of Cities, which actually brings every city in Riverside County together with one voice. Now, just imagine all the different cities in Riverside County, desert cities, Palm Springs, Palm Desert, Indio, and then Western Riverside County, Temecula, Marietta, Lake Elsinore, Canyon Lake, Wildemar. And yet, we all come together with one voice to, um, display our opposition to, uh, losing local control, and that's what's happening in Sacramento. It brings everybody together, and in that way, Riverside County is the fourth-largest county in the state, so we would like to think we carry a, a big stick, but we do carry a big voice when it comes to losing local control. So I don't want anybody to think that Temecula is not doing anything or hasn't done anything. We have. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else's comments? So, so I, I brought this for, for a number of reasons, and I, I appreciate you saying what you did, Mary Ann. You know, I remember standing on the steps of the Capitol with you a few years back.
Yes.
Opposing legislation, along with the League, and along with a lot of the cities and League members.
Yes.
Opposing that grab of local control and air, and you were with us as well. Where they were, uh, basically taking away our authority on citing, uh, cell phone towers and communications within our city. And I, there was success from, from that endeavor. So to say that the City of Temecula hasn't been involved, in fact, you've got the entire group of, how many cities, a hundred and some odd cities, standing there to, to sing "God Bless America" on the Capitol steps.
I did.
Yeah.
I did.
And, uh, you know, I mean, you know, we have had some good successes over the years, but the problem is, you know, from, from my perspective, and I think all of ours, there was a meeting not too long ago where we all sat here and we passed three items that had to do with, you know, basically state mandates regarding waste and, you know, everything else. And, you know, I left that meeting thinking, oh, why, why were we even here? If the states made all these decisions for us, why are we even here, right? And if they want to, uh, you know, legislate the City of Temecula and run it from, from the Capitol, then, then by all means, right? I mean, but that's basically where we're, we're at.
Yeah, over my dead body.
Exactly, you know, and, and, and I think, you know, look, there's, other cities have, have passed resolutions and, and they've, they've put out these things about, you know, constitutionality and, and, uh, City of, what's it?
Orville.
Orville, yeah. I mean, you know, these are, these are nice, um, gestures that, you know, rattle the saber, but accomplish practically nothing, right? And that's my frustration, you know, I'm not here to, you know, and I don't think any of us are, we don't, we're not looking for soundbites, we're not looking for, you know, something to put in the newspaper or to, you know, lob grenades at, uh, you know, at the state Capitol. We're here to actually get something done, and we've had success in that in the past.
Yes.
And so, passing a resolution, nobody in Sacramento cares whether we pass a resolution, let's be honest. Nobody's keeping tally of how many cities have passed these resolutions, or how many cities are joining into these different initiatives. Simply do not care. The other thing that, you know, is, is very important to me is if we are going to join in on any of the existing or emerging initiatives out there, that we maintain Temecula's voice. And that's the very frustrating part I see, is that these initiatives are often run by a small group of folks who create their own board of directors, and they carry that voice forward. And it doesn't fully represent the City of Temecula either, right? And it doesn't fully represent the city of Temecula either, right? And so, we're, we're in this weird dynamic where I, I think we need to have a strong voice. We need to be able to take back, uh, local control. And, uh, and we need to be able to do that with other communities of like interest, right? And so, I think up and down the state, communities are ready to, to have this conversation. But, you know, uh, look, it took us a hundred and seventy-one years to get to where we are now in eroding local control. This isn't something you're gonna resolve in six months or one legislative cycle or one proposition that's put on the ballot.
It's constant.
It's a constant thing, you know, and, and it goes from whether it's, you know, talking about transportation planning to housing, to, you know, waste management, water. I mean, you can go down the entire list of all of these areas where we have lost significant amount of authority to, I think, maintain the integrity and the identity of our communities. So, all of that said, you know, I think, um, you know, it's, it's our opportunity to work very closely with our legislative advocates. You know, Peter, if you wouldn't mind, I'll put you on the spot here, but you and I have spoken a little bit about some of the other cities who have been operating in this space and have been moving carefully, not just, you know, like a, the bull in the proverbial China shot, but are moving very carefully, recognizing that there are ways of getting these things done. It's just they have to be thoughtful and they have to be, you know, legal.
Well, it's relationships too.
Yeah, it is.
Very much.
And so, that's, that's what I'm looking for is consent from the council to find those avenues where we know we can have a direct effect, but we know this isn't gonna be done overnight. Nothing meaningful is gonna be done quickly because we've dug such a deep hole here. But we have to start somewhere and, and, you know, Peter, if you could just speak kind of briefly, if you would, just to, you know, what you've been seeing with some of the other cities that are active in this space and how we could benefit from, you know, those relationships.
Sure, I, I think one of the things that you mentioned, um, a couple of months ago when we talked, and I think it's very valid, is how the state handled, um, the recycling way back in, in, when the, almost when the city first incorporated.
Yep.
And that was the state set goals and then said to each city, you try and accomplish those goals. Now, they kept, they kept pushing the goals further out, so cities had to work harder and harder. But at least the city had the opportunity to try and do what was best for that city. And it's also the concept from back in the early nineteen eighties on the community development block grant funds from the federal government. Everybody complained to the federal government that they were dictating too much what cities and states could do or not do. So, they said, okay, well, we'll just have a program where we give you money with some broad guidelines. And so, those are the types of programs that a lot of cities are trying to push, um, through their advocacy so that cities aren't told, here's exactly what you need to do, like we were on the most recent, um, solid waste issues and, and planning and zoning, but, okay, here are the goals. You try and match those goals with what's best for your city and then we'll see how things are working out. And out of that came a lot of good ideas on recycling. I think that's one of the, uh, one of the best examples. And then also water management had a similar type of, um, process from the state. Not telling, not micromanaging your process, but just saying, here are the major goals that you need to accomplish.
Well, and I think, and, and I think that's an important lesson because, you know, it used to be that we would have, you know, um, both the stick and the carrot when legislation was passed, right? And it was, you know, you, you shall meet to these targets, but we're going to give you the flexibility to decide the best way to get to that target for your community. And then recognizing, and this was all, you know, even the historic, uh, you know, federal, uh, laws that came down, whether it's Clean Air, Clean Water Act and Dangerous Beaks Act, you had to meet certain targets. We all accepted that those were the targets laid down before us, but there was an opportunity for us to figure out the best path forward.
Yes.
And then, you know, they would, like you said, Peter, they, they would extend those deadlines. As long as you were demonstrating good faith effort in trying to meet those targets, there's always gonna be a hurdle to do that, you know, but, uh, but, but they would extend it or give you a concession and say, we, we see you're working on it, so just work a little harder, right? That, those days almost have, have disappeared entirely in legislation. Now, it's just a, you know, uh, they're, they're, they're standing on you, forcing you to pass, you know, your own local ordinances that fit with what the state thinks you should do. And I, you know, fully oppose that. Now, the, the, the recently, I think, the, uh, the house, affordable housing that was approved, you know? Um, I know it's a touchy subject. They basically, you know, exempted CEQA if you had the minimum of the twenty percent affordable housing. And that's exactly what we got, we got a minimum of twenty percent affordable housing because they don't have to do CEQA. There is no city review in that process. And I, that was disgusting to me to have to sit here and the state mandate a lot of that. You know, and I'm, I'm looking at that and I'm thinking, you know, there were plenty of opportunities for the state instead to write that legislation to say, here's a tool that you as a city could use to exempt certain types of affordable housing product, projects if it meets your standard.
And it speeds the project up.
And it incentivizes them and you as a city could help create the kind of housing that you need to meet your portfolio, right? But they didn't give us that opportunity, you know? And so, th- those are the things that I think really need to work toward and have those, those tougher conversations. And then, and then frankly, align ourselves with the cities that, um, you know, and Peter, you had mentioned Beverly Hills as an example. Align ourselves with the cities who are going about this in a very deliberate, very legal way so that we're building up that, that, uh, you know, administrative record in a lot of respects to be able to say either we, you know, force legislation, um, in a certain direction or, or simply, you know, litigation. Um, and I think we need to, you know, really have those, those conversations and create that framework within the city and start developing those relationships. But I'll be honest, just passing a resolution, we can do that every, every time we have a meeting. We can pass a new resolution and it's just gonna be a piece of paper that sits on our desk and nobody else's.
And Mr. Mayor, I couldn't agree with you more and I have taken that message to all of my county committees and, and really stress the fact that we need to be active in Sacramento all the time, not just when something comes before us that we, you know, that we don't like or disagree with. And so, and the second thing is, we, of course, our representatives, we talk to them all the time, assembly people and then senator. We need to build those relationships with committee chair people, tho- those people in Sacramento who have really no relationship with us otherwise. We know that our representatives are going to stand up and speak out for Temecula. But those other relationships in the different committees and all the areas of interest where we see, um, local control eroding, that's what we need to do. And we need to be there on a regular basis and we need to be there not asking for anything. We just need to go and meet and, you know, build those relationships and, and talk about Riverside County. Talk about Temecula and how wonderful it is. We're doing so many things, um, differently than so many cities and I think that Sacramento should learn about it. And not just our own representatives who already know what we're doing.
Well, and I think too, you know, the other, the other piece that we were involved with was, um, the cannabis, uh, issue, right? And I think that one was a great example. I mean, you know, I happened to be the chairman for the Bureau of Cannabis Control at the time, but, you know, in between all of our advisory meetings with the state, they decided to pass, you know, regulation that said basically all mobile distribution was legal statewide.
So, why were you meeting?
And, well, exactly, and, and, and the question was, of course, under Prop sixty-four, hey, you said local control was going to be maintained. And I don't remember exactly, I think it was twenty-seven cities and one county joined in on that lawsuit, including the city of Temecula. And ultimately, the bureau stepped back and, and it was like, no harm, no foul, we're just not gonna do this. So, it wasn't really a win or a loss, it was just kind of pulled off the books if my recollection is correct.
But the key was, everybody got together.
But the other key was, it only took twenty-seven cities in one county.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, it didn't take, you know, when we talk about the league, it's nice when there's four hundred and fifty-eight, eighty-two cities. Right, but you don't even need that, you just needed strategically twenty-seven cities in one county to join in to make that change, right? And so, that's, that's what I'm trying to look for is, is sort of consent or consensus within the council to, basically, let's, let's work with our legislative advocates in, in Sacramento. Let's work with, within the network of cities that we have close together. Um, and, and let's see if we can't start to move this thing, you know, forward in some sort of meaningful way.
And we can be a lead agency in doing that. I mean, we can pull those cities together and I think we definitely should.
I, I just wanted to mention very briefly, one of the other areas where the legislature gave cities some leeway and said, here's the goal, you meet it, was in the old redevelopment law.
Yes.
The, the, the state said, okay, you're getting all this tax increment, but you have to set aside twenty percent for affordable housing. And cities up and down the state all had different programs to provide for affordable housing. Some, some rehabilitated housing stocks, some made new ones. Old Town Temecula was a, a gem in coming up with the mixed-use projects that fulfill the affordable requirements while still having some great commercial and, and mixed-use development. So, that's another good example.
Well, and in fact, the state redevelopment director at the time came down and toured Old Town and was just absolutely amazed.
Right.
So.
We did it, we did it well.
We can lead the way.
Mr. Schwank, sorry.
It's okay.
His hand was up first.
Okay. Go ahead, go ahead.
So, you know, a couple of things. Um, after the, the, the organic waste vote that we had, right? I think I remember, you know, speaking to you as we were leaving and we're talking about doing something meaningful, right? Because this is a nuanced conversation, right? Well, we can throw out a resolution and, and we can get a headline, but at the end of the day, it requires sending folks to Sacramento that can get along with a diverse group of legislators in a massive state, right? Spending the last two and a half years on SCAG, um, going through the Rena process and local control. I mean, I feel like I've had this conversation like ad nauseam.
Yes.
Every single person there is saying the same thing, yet the folks that end up going to Sacramento say, well, we have a different plan. This is what, what we think we need to do. Like, I grew up in a city where it was okay to burn your trash, right?
Oh, me too.
We've grown up since then, right? Things change, right? Um, and so, while I prefer the carrot and, and I think that works well, and in a city like the things we're doing, um, we, 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 we deserve that. There are some cities that unfortunately need the stick, but California goes, everybody gets the same stick, right? Um, so I, so I think m- my point is, is it needs to be meaningful, right? What we're going to do, um, it has to make connections. It has to make connections beyond Riverside County to, to actually get up there and influence and say, well, let us tell our story. Let us show you what we've done. Because we can all sit up here and say, from Old Town Temecula to Uptown Jefferson, to some of the affordable projects we've done, we've been doing a good job on a lot of this stuff, from our recycling to, you name it.
We were the pilot city for recycling in the state.
So, we've been doing a good job, but unfortunately, we live in a large state and, you know, we're, we're sort of seeing some other cities. And, and listen, I'm on, on, on these, these, uh, this regional board where, like, there are folks that don't care about Temecula, right? They're, it's all about their city and their city matters more than anything else. Well, our city matters as much to us as it does to them, right, as their city does to them. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is whatever we do, it has to be meaningful, it has to be more, it has to be actionable. Uh, it has to be sustainable because you mentioned, you know, how long it took us to get to this point. It's going to take a good sustained effort over many years to build those relationships and make a difference to where we can say, hey, look, we don't need the stick, right? We don't need the stick for every little thing, right? But we're doing a good job, so.
And, and I'll say, uh, uh, Councilmember Alexander is next, but I'll say unwinding some of this isn't all that difficult because we've already seen the state do that on a few pieces, especially the, the speed limit issues within the city, right? So, it's not impossible to figure out. Ms. Alexander.
Um, just to give you guys an example, I had a meeting today with CRNR. Okay, so going back to the whole green waste thing, I think it's just such a, uh, something we just voted on, so it's very prevalent to what we're talking about. And what saddens me is the fact that CRNR has worked their butt off this last couple of years to be able to bring their percentages exactly to where the state wants it. And then all of a sudden, they turn around, the state turns around and now raises the bar again and they're at the exact percentage that they were with all the work they did. And so, I see that they are gonna continue to do that and raise that bar over and over until we step up, step up. And I think not only are the relationships important, but the fact is that we don't fold, that we actually continue to think outside the box, be a little bit more shrewd and continue to work towards what our residents need because we know that that's why we're here. We're here for their voice and I'm tired of getting the boot in the face and I've only been here for a year. So, and I, I know a lot of our residents as well, the same thing, they're feeling the pressure. And so, I think between the garbage, the housing, California crime, I mean, is out, outdoor, it's incredible right now. I find it's very important that we have that voice and that we start stepping up right now because if not, we're not gonna be able to. So, that's kind of where I stand on that.
Thank you.
And I think you, we have to have a regular plan. We have to have a plan that is based on regular visits, not just emergency visits, which we also do, but regular visits and then we need to stay in touch otherwise, you know, in written form, um, calling. And, and again, with, with, we've always done well using the carrot and I think Temecula has that reputation. On the other hand, we are not afraid to get tough. When we need to, just ask the county Riverside, we sued them four times and won four times. So, we are not afraid to do that either, but, and this needs to be a long-term, long-term process because Sacramento is never going to go away. And you're right, no matter what you do, and water is another good example, what you do, how much you save, how much you, you know, conserve, they're always gonna either, you know, cut your allotment and say, do more. And then they don't take into consideration the progress that you've already made.
Exactly.
So, and, and that will continue. That's why we need to be active and it needs to be long-term. And we have to develop the message too, and then the method in which we're going to, um, meet and build relationships.
All right, so, all that said, next steps forward, what makes the most sense? Um, I mean, I'll tell you what I was thinking is just, you know, since we're on the subject of, uh, subcommittees, it might be easiest just to create a subcommittee specific to local control.
Absolutely.
So. So, that's it. I would be, I would be happy to, uh, serve on that, but I'd be looking for somebody to join me as well.
I would too as well.
Cause I'm already, um, working on it, well, I have been working on it with WR COGS, so I would love to serve on that one.
All right.
I think also just for me, just to get into something new and different, uh, also because with, uh, elections coming up, we don't know the area and I still have definitely another three years here and I just think it would make sense for me to ensure that that continues to be prolonged.
I, I agree and that's a good idea. I think initially though, we need to have people who have either the experience or have some of those relationships made already. And let, let us get the groundwork done and the framework done first and then, you know, and, and.
Just, well, this is what I'm thinking too, sorry to cut, but if the two of you are up for reelection, God forbid, the two of you are off, nobody's here. So, if we have somebody who's, at least myself or Stu, who have several years left to go, will be able to continue the ball running rather than just starting over. And to continue those relationships, that's gonna be good because somebody like, uh, you mayor are gonna have the relationships. I'm gonna be able to connect that with, uh, with you and then continue that ball running with whatever happens the following year.
I still like the way, I still like to get the groundwork done and the foundation finished first.
Well, that's a conversation for another day anyways. I mean, that's not what we're here to discuss, right? I mean, in the end, while, as we're making the determination is to put this on the agenda, correct?
No, this is actually on your agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, so this, this was previously voted by all of you to be on tonight. We're looking for the council's direction as it relates to the item and how you wanna go forward.
And we're talk, what we're talking about is within the scope of what the agenda item calls for.
Okay, all right.
So, I'm, I'm looking for some version of a motion at this point.
You know, the subcommittee is great, um, so I'll certainly motion subcommittee to be formed around local control um, with, uh, Mayor Ron and Councilmember Edwards serving on the subcommittee. That's my motion.
Can I second?
For, I second. All right, any other conversation on this? All right, well, let's go ahead and put that to a vote then. All right, that passes five zero. Thank you all and we look forward to getting, moving on this really quickly and reporting back very soon on our success. Um, okay, let's see, we have, uh, oh, this is a little out of order from what I expected. Um, do we wanna do, uh, items for future city councils first before getting into city manager reports? Yeah, cause we have.
We do. Mr. Mayor, typically we end on that, um, but if you want to move it around.
If we could, I like ending with Peter and, and Aaron having the last word. It's always, always so uplifting. Um, so, so we'll move that around for future council meetings. Um, items for future, uh, city council, do we have to, to read this thing? Did I record something?
Uh, yes, you did record something for this.
Well, take it away, Matt.
Wow.
Any council member, including the mayor, may request an item be placed.
Any council member, including the mayor, may request an item be placed on a future agenda. Any such request will be discussed under this section. In making the request, a council member may briefly describe the topic of the proposed agenda item and any timing associated with the placement of the item on the agenda. This description shall not exceed three minutes unless extended by a majority of the vote of the city council. No substantive discussion on the subject of the motion may occur. General discussion amongst the city council on items listed under this section of the agenda shall be limited to 15 minutes. Items may only be placed on the agenda by a council member pursuant to policy or by the city manager based on administrative or operational needs of the city. Public comments on the placement of these agenda items shall be limited to a maximum of 30 minutes. Individual comments shall not exceed three minutes. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by Resolution Number 2021-54.
Okay, that's weird. I don't know if I like that or not, the reading of the thing. We gotta get somebody with better personality.
You sure look nice, though.
Yeah, okay. So, item number one, at the request of Mayor Protem Schwank, recognition for Supervisor Chuck Washington. Three minutes, sir.
This is pretty straightforward, I'll just take a few seconds. Obviously Supervisor Washington served our city for many years, also served in another nearby city, that'll leave nameless for now, but has served us well. And you could say he didn't ever really retire, he sort of moved on, but I think he still deserves recognition. He's definitely one of the, that founding council that I felt like had that cohesive structure that did so much for our city. So I would just like this to find its way to a subcommittee, and honestly, even reach out to Supervisor Washington and his family to sort of find something that's meaningful for him, or to recognize him.
Okay.
So, we need to vote on that?
Any comments? Any others? All right, then, we need a motion and a second on that one.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, congratulations, we'll be talking about this next time. All right, second item, Medal of Bravery for Extraordinary Courage, at the request of Councilmember Alexander.
All right, so obviously, I know all of us remember that Marine that came in here in his uniform with his son, and it just really moved me. And I love giving them a piece of paper, but you know something, that man just risked his life and his son's life to actually do something for our public, even beyond just in his uniform. And I know there are several other people in the public, our residents, who go beyond and above. And if I can read this, one of the things that I was thinking of calling it, really just the Temecula Medal of, oh my goodness, there we go today, hold on. The Temecula Medal of Valor. The Medal of Valor in itself is one of the greatest honors bestowed upon a person. Although people in certain professions risk their life every day to protect the public, some people show exceptional commitment to their public and beyond. So that's just one of the things I would love to be able to just, for those people who go above and beyond, not only the first responders, but I'd love to be able to include them as well, obviously, but even the public, just to be able to give them some type of recognition and just something to bring home other than just a piece of paper. So what my suggestion is, is just to have some type of medal that either we can place on their lapel or something, or even wrap around their neck, and I'm sure our staff can come up with something beautiful, but I just figured it'd be something just a little bit more special for them to go home with, so.
I like it.
I like it.
I like it, too.
All right, well, let's go ahead and vote on that, and if I get a motion and a second, please.
My motion.
Second.
Well, that one also passes 5-0. All right, and then the third item for this evening, term limits for city council members, at the request of Councilmember Alexander. Take it away.
Okay, so this is one of those, I think, areas that I definitely think is bipartisan. I think both sides can really kind of come together on this, and I'm hoping it's something that we can move forward and have the discussion about as far as having term limits. Some of my thoughts, and this is, there's so many ideas in this, but I want to keep it brief for three minutes. I think it can really broaden the thinking and bring fresh ideas to have new council members come in. It'll lessen burnout. I know Mayor, or previous Mayor Marian Edwards ended up, she did a great job for a year and a half. Sometimes it's a lot of work, and so sometimes just to take that time off, I know just having these four weeks in general was a nice little break for a little bit, and come back and you're feeling refreshed. And I'm feeling that if we do something as if we have three terms, and we can obviously talk about the terms and what that looks like, but having, you know, what would be, 12 years total, and then take a break, and then we can come back in if they end up getting reelected again, would be something that could be really beneficial. Again, burnout, and it also gives the opportunity for the public not to have to go against the incumbent as well. Again, bringing fresh new ideas, and that's, I think, what we're looking for in our city. I mean, we're always talking about bringing in, we have a lot of new people coming in, so, you know, bringing their ideas to the table rather than just the same faces, and I think that's a good thing. And if they want to choose to come back and run again, by all means, if the public wants them back, they'll be able to bring them back. So that is my thought as far as for term limits, and I'd like to be able to see where we can at least have the discussion as to what that looks like.
Any comments from the council? All right, so do we want to see that on a future agenda, if I can get a motion and a second?
Can I motion it?
Yes.
I'm gonna motion it.
So I'll second.
All right, and if we can vote, please. Okay, we'll bring that back for future discussion. Any items that you would like to see added for the three-minute conversation next time? Anybody burning items of interest?
So I don't have anything, I just want to make a quick comment. I like that process, how we're doing this, that's it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, me too, then. All right. All right, so let's go ahead and have the city managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate having the last word as well, second to last word. Just two quick things. Earlier in the meeting, you guys were discussing litter on the freeway, and I just wanted to make it clear, of late, myself, Kevin, we've been having conversations with Pat Thomason, he's really all over this, and we actually do have a, now have a contractor, under contract, that when we identify those on and off ramps that are littered, or when the wind blows, everything kind of catches, that is their job to actually go out there. And then, while we can't get a group of volunteers to go out there on the freeway, nor should we, we do have someone available to us, and we're holding them accountable to really keep our on and off ramps as gateways clean. And so hopefully, over time, you will see a difference in out there, and if you don't let me know, we will be sure to sort of follow up appropriately. So that is in place now. Secondly, Mr. Mayor, I know you're gonna speak to this a little later on, but we did lose a dear friend to the city of Temecula, and I know you'll speak to that a little bit later, so I'll leave that to you. Thank you.
Peter?
No further report tonight.
Well, as Mr. Adams mentioned, one of our original city council members, and really true founders and mother of the city of Temecula, passed away this morning, Peg Moore.
She was a great lady.
Thank you.
Served on the first city council. They moved away for a time, and they loved Temecula so much that they came back, and not only did they take up residency in Temecula again, but they jumped in with both feet and were volunteering on so many different, you know, projects and programs. And really, if it weren't for Jimmy and Peg, they were instrumental in Temecula's original incorporation. They were on the original incorporation committee for the city of Temecula. So we have Peg and Jimmy Moore to thank for the fact that we get to sit here tonight and talk about one of the most beautiful cities in the country.
And I'd like to end this evening's meeting in memory of Peg Moore, and wish her the best, and her family as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.